You ready?
We should be ready, I guess, sir.
You guys are ready. All right, well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, November 22nd, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome all of our guests here in attendance today and everybody online tuning in. If everyone, please bear with me, I'm losing my voice, but if everyone would please stand for the pledge. We move the flags in at the back, and then Commissioner Titchell will lead us into invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd join me in a word of prayer. Precious and loving heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you today thanking you for the beautiful day that you've given us, and especially in order, thank you for all the young people that are here today, for the talent they have, and in order for those that God has directed, we thank you for that. In order today, we just ask that you be with us as we go through this meeting, that everything we say and do will be pleasing to you. We do all this in thy precious holy name. Amen.
Please proceed. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Noel, any additions, deletions, or changes to public meeting agenda?
No, sir, there are none.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the public meeting agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any additions, corrections, or questions about the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, minutes are approved by mutual consent. All right, the first order of business on our agenda is to commend the Southern Garrett High School Marching Band. Many of them are in attendance today along with their advisors and coaches. We want to, A, congratulate you and welcome you here, and more importantly, to be able to present a commendation to you on behalf of the citizens of Garrett County for how you represented yourselves and your accomplishments on behalf of everybody here, not just your school, but the greater community. You made us all very proud, you sounded great, I got to hear you multiple times, and you sound a lot better than I sound today. I got to see you Friday in the gym, too, which was, was nice, and I know, I work very closely with Mr. Shaw, and I know he does an excellent job with you guys, so this is for the greater audience, this is the second time in three years that you basically won the Super Bowl, so congratulations. I know you, you have to give these two something to cheer about, and you were able to do that. So let me go ahead and attempt to read this commendation, and then, I know you have a speech, and then we'll bring everybody up to recognize everybody. It is with great pleasure that we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, give this commendation on November the 22nd, 2022, to Southern Garrett High School Marching Band, the 2022 Tournament of Bands 1A Atlantic Coast Champions. We, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, and the great people of our county are happy to join together to extend our sincerest congratulations to the Southern Garrett High School Band on receiving the prestigious 2022 Tournament of Band Championship, performing "Frosted." Your commendable performance and strive for excellence this season under the direction of Jason Shaw, Mark Weeks, Theresa Weeks, Blair Glass, Richard Clever, and Matt Stoops is well deserving of this award. We hereby bestow upon you as a token of our esteem and gratitude for your accomplishment this certificate of commendation, signed by Commissioners Titchell, Heimball, and myself. And what you may not know is, right after you all won, Jason, who just walked through here, changed all the lights on the courthouse to red in celebration of the Southern Rams championship. So a small token there, Jason, is a small token to show our appreciation as well. So if you all would come up and receive this and say anything you want to say.
I wouldn't go that far.
Come on up.
Just come around, line up behind us.
Yep, just come on up and line up behind us.
Oh, sorry.
So were your jackets part of this, or is it just a regular band jacket, or was that the cause?
These are ACC jackets, yeah.
Yeah, they just received these yesterday and a medal from the staff when their recognition to the back verifies that we are the champions in high music, visual, and percussion. That was my glasses. There's a reason to make you smile.
So who's speaking? Anybody have anything you want to say? Mr. Shaw?
Thank you for having us, and I think I can speak to the staff that these students are tremendous young men and women, and learned a lot about working hard and what working hard means, and reaping what you sow, if you will, and some terrific young students from Southern Garrett, and we had the privilege to direct them, so I think, thank you for having us.
Today represented with us is our drum major, Sean Christman, and our assistant drum captain, I get, not assistant drum captain, our color guard captain. All of our seniors are represented here. Dakota is a junior, but he was a captain, so we brought him in with us today, so anyway.
We also want to say thank you to the community. Around 10:30, 11 o'clock, we had an escort from the Sheriff's Department, fire and rescue from lots of different locations, and I know they woke up the town in, in good spirits, so we want to say thank you to them for support, and just the general support of the community has been awesome throughout the past few years especially, so.
Excellent. Well, congratulations, guys.
Well, as a Southern high graduate, it's good to see Southern Rams.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks for coming.
What's that? School building, class is over, right? About for the day, you're all on time?
Yeah.
You're, you're free to leave unless you want to sit here and listen to planning and land development. As exciting as that is, I know.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Congrats, again.
Can she get out a picture with her, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Maybe?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
My wife really sent me here for a picture.
Come on back up on the stage. Come on back up on the stage.
Thank you.
You don't do this every day, you got to take advantage of it.
All right.
You know, there is a charge, Ricky, right?
Absolutely, thank you. I did vote for you, Ken, so.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is another recognition for Personally Yours Monogramming, and Connor, I'll invite you up. Connor and Kim.
So I'm going to do the first part, and then we're going to pitch it over to Connor.
All right.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. I have the privilege today, or we have the privilege today, of celebrating the 35th anniversary of Personally Yours Monogramming owned by Ken and Theresa Feather. And to the two of you, on behalf of our department and Garrett County Government, we want to thank you for choosing Garrett County as the home for the business. Pitch it to Connor.
You know, and that's well said, Kim, thank you so much. We can't iterate enough how, you know, positive your contribution to the community has been. Thirty-five years, it was an absolute pleasure connecting with you guys. I got to go into their shop to see how everything works, and literally all the work that goes into each and every stitch that they put into all of the work that they do, it's literally seen in the community. So thank you, guys, for everything you've done for these 35 years and the contributions that you have made to this community. If we could have you guys come up here, I think we've got a proclamation that the Commissioners would like to present.
We do, and again, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners' commendation on November the 22nd, 2022, to Personally Yours Monogramming LLC for the 35th anniversary. We, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, and the citizens of our county are happy to join together to extend our sincerest congratulations to Personally Yours Monogramming LLC on its 35th anniversary. Since 1987, owners Ken and Theresa Feather have carried on a tradition of quality that can be found in the very fabric of this community and surrounding region. Congratulations not only on this milestone, but also on the exemplary work and professionalism of the past 35 years. May these years be an inspiration for continued success, signed by Commissioners Titchell, Heimball, and myself. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Congratulations. I'll hand this to you guys, and we'll give the pictures. All right. Thank you, guys. Anything you'd like to say?
Actually, there is. You know, we started as a mom and pop, we're still mom and pop. We named our business Personally Yours Monogramming for two reasons. We want it to be personalized with you. We tell people our minimum is one. People are like, one? You know, that's, that's unheard of nowadays, you don't hear that. We want to personalize what we do, we want to meet you, and we want to talk to you and find out about you and how you want to do this. We are now on our fourth machine that we've had. We started out with a Meister Bam, which was one needle, one thread, you wound down bobbin, and it had a sewing space of how big, Kenny?
Eight inches.
About eight inches. Now we have, we had a two-head for years that was a copycat, and then finally in 2017, we bought a new machine that has 16 needles, runs about 1,600 stitches a minute. We have a book here, if anybody would, will stay later, if anybody would like to see some of the work that we do. We can do custom design, or we can do a generic design, and we have thousands and thousands of designs, and over the years, it's, that our computer screen, can you hold this? Our, on our one machine was literally this big, and it had 100 spaces, letters that you could put in there. You had to put every step of what color you wanted in there, what needle was on. If you had more than six colors in the thing, then you re-threaded it, did it through again. We have, we had a shop downtown for about four, four or five years, and that was a good setup for us, but we decided to move it back into our home, and you know what? I'm going to tell you, we don't do bad considering that we don't have, you know, at this point, we're going to try to get some Facebook, we're going to try to get a website, but we have been busy for 35 years just by word of mouth, and I have people in this room that I can tell you that we've done work for, and they verify, you know, our quality. We're not going to send something out that's half-done or doesn't look right. We take very much pride in our business and our community, and people say, well, you don't charge enough. Well, I live in this community, I have to face you. I'm not going to gouge you, you know, because I know each and every one of you. I can look around here, and I, I know a lot of people in this room. So that's why we call it Personally Yours Monogramming, because we started out Personally Yours, and people thought we were maybe off-color district or something, so we had to add the monogramming so that they knew that we were actually doing monogramming. We don't do silk screening, we don't do anything else, we just do thread, and each of the shirts that you have on, we have that design, if you ever need it, we have lots of cards, we can pass out. But we thank you, thank you for this. This means so much to us because, you know, 35 years in, in a small town like this, and we were the first. We're, we're the original, I don't care what anybody says, we were the first. We started in 1987, and let me tell you, we actually bought our first machine from Jane Gibson, who just did it out of her home as a part-time whatever, and we've grown it into, you know, like I said, this is our fourth machine that we have now.
Well, you're working on 50 years of it.
Oh, yeah. See about that, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And Kenny is also an employee of the Roads Department.
Yep.
But he can also model his shirt, I probably model it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is the adoption of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan. We had a public hearing on this last meeting. We have not received any comment.
We have not?
In the two-week comment period, so I will read Resolution 2022-12, which is the Garrett County Comprehensive Plan. At the conclusion of that, we'll entertain a motion, if you so agree, in a second, and then we'll vote on this. And again, this is for the 2022 Garrett County Comprehensive Plan, whereas the Land Use Article, the Antutote Code of Maryland, empowers the county to enact, adopt, amend, and execute a comprehensive plan, whereas Garrett County has, by duly adopted resolution, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners appointed a planning commission to exercise the powers and duties conferred by the Land Use Article, and whereas said Garrett County Planning Commission acting with the advice and assistance of the citizens of the county has caused to be prepared to 2022 Garrett County Comprehensive Plan. Said Comprehensive Plan is designed and intended to protect the health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the present and future residents of Garrett County. Excuse me. Whereas said Comprehensive Plan has been subject to public review and to public hearings pursuant to said Land Use Article, and whereas Garrett County Planning Commission has approved the plan and has recommended that it be adopted by the Commissioners, and whereas the Board of Garrett County Commissioners has carefully considered the Comprehensive Plan together with the comments and suggestions regarding said plan and find that the plan constitutes a suitable, rational, and timely plan to guide the future development of Garrett County. Now therefore be it resolved, the 2022 Garrett County Comprehensive Plan consisting of maps and text is hereby adopted as a comprehensive plan for Garrett County pursuant to the Land Use Article. Be it further resolved, the Garrett County Planning Commission shall cause said amendments to be filed with the Clerk of Circuit Court of Garrett County. And if you all agree to that, and with the contents of the plan that was presented two weeks ago, I will entertain a motion to approve that.
Make a motion that we approve the Comprehensive Plan.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so this is duly adopted by unanimous vote by the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. This, this is the 22nd, right?
Yes.
Twenty-second day of November, 2022. All right, the next item on the agenda, also dealing with planning. We are, by motion, if I get a motion, we're going to close the public meeting and open a public hearing. The public hearing will be in regard to agricultural land preservation districts, so while we're waiting on that, Sierra, I'll go ahead and invite you up, and do I have a motion to close the public meeting and open a public hearing?
So moved.
We are now in a public hearing, and Sierra, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Can I plug my own machine in?
Yes.
Show some maps?
Absolutely.
I don't know, I like some visuals. I think it's helpful, talking about this kind of stuff. So our agricultural district program is a voluntary program where landowners want to preserve their land, and it's for a temporary tax, it's for a temporary ag district, but this would bet them for a permanent easement where they could sell their development rights. Right now, those programs are really well-funded with agricultural tax. And I'll go through the eight districts that we have on the document today. They vary in different parts of the county, but we make sure that they're not in the planned water and sewer areas or the planned growth areas of the county. Some of them are in Bear Creek, which is for the Rural Legacy Area Program. If it's in that area, it qualifies for that program, and in the other areas, they would qualify for the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation Program. Am I not plugged in all the way? So these have been approved by the county's Agricultural Advisory Board and the Planning Commission, and this is the final step, that the Commissioners have a public hearing. And if all goes well, then we can move on to approve these, and then we can get them to sign their agricultural districts, and then potentially apply for permanent easements for the properties. Can you look on this? All right.
Doesn't look right.
Well, that's fine, I'm willing to just play along. So the first one we have is one in the Bear Creek watershed. It's the Red Wing Farm LLC, it is 163 acres, we might have this up. It's actually adjacent to a rural legacy property. It's kind of south, it's kind of interior to Mitchell Rush Road and accident Friendsville Road. Yeah, I don't think I'll, oh, maybe.
Do yours come up?
That's not my screen. Bring up my monitor. There's currently no houses on this property. Maybe not.
Give me your power, give me your thumb drive.
Ah, you can do it that way, sure.
Let's see if mine, this one comes up. Of course, I'm not getting any off this either.
Should be called ag districts on that meme directory. Just click on that USB drive, and it should show the small, the PDF. Or the ag districts. There it is. There you go.
All right, now one on.
Do you have full screen that for me?
I'm starting by getting the connection.
We're running a little bit behind, maybe. Should just go ahead and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
There we go.
Of course, now we got to go.
Okay.
There you go. There you go. Well, that's my screen. So first is, oh, and it's gone. Oh, well. I'm not meant to have, that's fine. The second one we have is a 147-acre property in the North Branch Potomac watershed. It's up against the Potomac State Forest on Bethlehem Road for Richard Broderick, and then, oh, cool. We have another one in the Bear Creek watershed along Cove Road. It's 148 acres for Philip Margrove, and also it's against another district we have in the program. This one is adjacent to the Sabbath River Forest and is on Lower New Germany Road, it's 157-acre property. And this one is in the Southern New Germany River watershed, splits, split by White Rock, White Rock Road, there aren't any other easements beside it. But it's eligible. This one is almost in the water and sewer planning area, that's the brown area, but it's just outside of it on Smith Road, close to Sabbath River State Forest. And then we have another one for Doug Bender, it's adjacent to an easement on, what's that, Harmon Road, and against Camp Hickory there in the Bear Creek watershed, so this would also be eligible for rural legacy. And lastly, we have another one, it's, it's almost on the state line, above Friendsville on Long Blade Road. It's 100, it's 99.3 acres, and it's actually two parcels, so, and it's adjacent to another district we recently approved, so. Any questions? Public comments? Yes, go for it.
I know General Senate's been putting a lot more money into rural legacy and the program. Do you have enough money, have the county been giving enough money to fund all the requests that you've been getting for?
I'm interested, so the last year was the first time, like, we picked it up and put a rural legacy grant in. We did get a decent grant, but the list keeps on getting longer, so we'll be putting in more requests for rural legacy. In terms of mouth, it's pretty much like a pot that's split between the counties pretty equally, but our requests this year, usually they would limit us to 12, Chad, was it? But we put in 16 mouth applications this year, so I'm very interested to see in the spring how many get offers, and then, well, if they don't get offers, then we put them in for another round, so hopefully we'll see some close soon.
What was, what was the total value of those?
I don't have a price on those, or. What's the current, like, ag land compensation for? Right now, they see around, I'm going to say $2,000 to $2,500 an acre is what we're seeing, so. No problem.
Any other questions? Any questions from the Commission? All right, thank you, Sierra.
No problem.
If I can have a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting?
So moved.
We are now back in the public meeting, and if there are no questions on these, we can go ahead and act. We will take them as a slate. Can I entertain a motion to approve the eight applicants for the land preservation districts that were just outlined by the Planning Department?
I'll make the motion to approve all these applicants.
I mean, we have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sierra.
Thank you, Sierra. Okay, next up on the agenda is the 2023 legislative request, and this will be, excuse me, the last time that this board of any Commissioners make legislative requests to this board of legislators, as both of them are ready to ride into the sunset. Thank you both for coming today, and I'll just open the floor up first to you all for any comments before we present our requests.
I just want to say it's been a tremendous honor representing this county as a delegate for District 1A the last 16 years, and so, and it's, I just want to express my appreciation to the general public for giving the honor to represent them for this period of time, and also want to comment on the cooperation and the good relationship that you've had with the county Commissioners over the last years that I've been in Dallas. And it's, I think it's a version of those situation or issue that we did not agree on, and there may have been one or two, but basically, everything the Commissioners requested, we've done everything we could do to get that legislation enacted so the county code could be changed toward the issues that you presented could be approved by General Senate and time and volume.
I'll just say thank you all for all the due diligence. It's been a real pleasure representing Garrett County in several capacities for 44 years, leading the legislation, for, for as Commissioner, working with different boards of commissioners. We've always had a great relationship that you have to have, you're going to get stuff accomplished, we all need to work together. If we disagree on stuff, we try to, now, work it out and make sure we can come up with a compromise or whatever, to make sure stuff gets done for the people. I believe over those years, and with people working closely with Wendell here, the last 16 years, I think we've got a fair amount accomplished. Several things yet to come, I believe, down the road, not too distant in the future. Basically, this legislation will pass. Jim will be moving on, and he'll be meeting with you next year, the two of you, plus Ryan. We're already practicing for going to the front seat and the back seat once we're out. Hopefully, we, if you need us, we'd be able to help develop contacts, we may do it over here, it might be able to provide some input and stuff to help out the county and any of the citizens of the county, what their needs and desire can be. Just keep up the good work, you've got great staff. You've got great staff, they do a tremendous job. I only see big pluses for Garrett County in the future. I think we're one of the parts of the state that some people may not like it, but I think we're going to move forward and gain some population, maybe not a whole lot, because families these days aren't having eight, 10 kids like they used to, you know, one or two or whatever. But we hope to have the opportunity there for young people to stay here if they want to make a decent, really great family. And I think some of those things will start coming to fruition not too far down the road. So thank you all very much, and keep on dropping. Garrett, keep on dropping.
All right, Mr. Knoll, do you want to present our requests?
Yes, certainly. So we, the Commissioners have two requests, and then the Liquor Board has a request. So these are both housekeeping. And the first one has to do with amending the Public Laws of Garrett County, Section 30-03, which is the meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. Currently, the section reads, "The Board of County Commissioners will meet in public session weekly." And the Commissioners would like to have that changed to meet to, to agree with the current process, which is the Board of County Commissioners will be, will meet in public session at least twice a month. And public meetings will be in person, maybe in person or video broadcast. So that's the first request that we have. The second request is to modify Title 14, subsection 8, collections of sales tax. Section 14-813, Notice by Advertising Expenses in a Lean on Property. And this has to do with the collection of fees for advertising the liens on a property that is sold. Last year, we went to an online method for tax collections. And we want, we'd like to change the current law and out of the, out of section 5, 2-4, it certainly, it currently says in Garrett County, Somerset County, and Comico County, it, there's a charge for each, $8 for each property sold. We'd like Garrett County removed from that. And in section 7, we like, we like to add it in to, in Caroline, Garrett, Hartford, Howard, Prince George's County, and Talbot County, $10 for each property sold. So we're going from $8 to $10 for the cost of each property sold online. That's a, we need a change in the actual legislation for that. And then the final is for the Liquor Control Board. And Debbie, would you like to discuss those?
Yes.
I know they have the.
Thank you. Debbie Alston, I'm the administrative to the Liquor Control Board. And I'd like to, on behalf of the Liquor Control Board, also known as the Board of Licensed Commissioners, thank you Delegate Bytso and Senator Edwards on all the years you've considered our legislative requests and listened to our requests, and your staff for helping things move through the legislation. It's not an easy task sometimes, and I know we come back every year with some housekeeping changes. And this year, same, same thing. We have a few housekeeping and one creation for our own local sections. So the first one that we want to do is create a section for the Alcoholics Beverages Article 21-2202, expiration of license. Currently, we fall under the State General section, which reads that a license is considered null and void after the 10th day that a license holder has vacated or been evicted. We're finding, unfortunately, right now, we have several businesses that are closed and for sale, and we'd like to keep their licenses on hold during the transition time. So in speaking with Tom Arches from the State Alcohol Tobacco Commission, he said that we should piggyback on with Baltimore County and Montgomery County. So that is what we're going to do, and we're going to ask for 180-day that a license can be considered on hold. Next is an amendment to our multiple-day events. This is for qualifying nonprofits. We want to make an amendment to Alcoholics Beverages Article 21-1309, multiple-day, and add a section that says holding another license is allowed. We now have a licensed nonprofit that has a full-time license, and they still want to do fundraisers or events at the Performing Arts Center. So it would create the statute to be clear that they can hold another license. Similar, same thing, amend Alcoholics Beverages Article 21-1310 for multiple events. So if Garrett Arts Council wants to get an event license and do several fundraisers at the New Performing Arts Center, this will allow that, and they don't need to come back in front of the board. And it's just cleaning up the language, basically, is what it is. We have a gift basket permit that went into effect two years ago, and we'd like to amend the purchasing option for that. It's Alcoholics Beverages 21-1001.3F. And we want to add a section that they can also purchase from a wholesaler. We have our first gift basket license permit holder, and the request came in, could they also purchase directly from a wholesaler or from the manufacturer, such as the cider business in the accident areas? So that's, that request is to add a section that they can purchase from a wholesaler or retailer. Then we have an amendment to Alcoholics Beverages Article 21-902. This is our Class B Beer, Wine, and Liquor License. It's issued to hotels and restaurants. We have a current licensed hotel that has a beer and wine license. They'd like to upgrade to beer, wine, and liquor. However, the current statute reads that they must have 25 rooms, and we'd like to make that in, similar to the beer and wine for 10 rooms. So it's, then that would allow them to upgrade their license if they choose. And our final amendment would be for the Alcoholics Beverages Article 21-2006-C3, Sunday Sales. We would like to request an amendment to extend the hours and begin sales at 6:00 AM where permitted. And that was a request by a couple of our license holders. And that's all I have. One of our board members is with us, so if you have any general questions or need more information, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, I don't have a question. I'd just say it's been tremendous pleasure with you every year, because you come every year and present these. And I know a lot of these issues are complex, especially dealing with, with the legislation that we have to introduce. So anytime we've ever had any problems with ways drafted, or, or once it's drafted, we always give it, we give it to you to make sure that you look at it and that you're satisfied and still what you want. And then it's always worked, you know, really smooth because you've made it work smoothly.
Well, thank you. I have 24 years in with the Liquor Board, so it just becomes part of my job. And the, the language is easily figured out after that many years on how to structure the requests, basically.
You're, you're doing a good job of just re-aid what you said and say, did that cheat over the delegate?
I was going to ask him this afternoon when we were talking about the weather, if I could do that.
I was just with incoming delegate that he tried to get all these put in one bill, like we've been able to do the last couple of years. We don't have one, two, three, four, five, six different bills, and we usually can do that. So when he has to be drafted, see if they can put it all in one bill. Makes that a lot easier.
Did that hurt my head count or anything, or my productivity?
Yeah, so we do have that to combine the request in one cross file, dealing with the start date of July 1st, 2023. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions at all about the legislative request or any comments from the Commissioners on that? Any questions from the audience specific to the legislative request? Yes, sir?
I have one request, I guess you'd say. There's a nonprofit group here in County that's working on a facility called the Reflection House. And they were already, they've got a draft agreement from VNR and are working on a lease to, give a lease to take over the Meta Mountain Juvenile Detention Facility. And the Juvenile Services have closed it down, and it's set in there vacant, and it's really an ideal location to put in a drug rehabilitation and facility and longer-term care up to a year. It's a nonprofit group that's working, like, they're having a meeting today with Kevin Simmers down in Washington County, but Kevin Simmers lost his daughter, hit the overdose. And he's got tremendous support from the Washington County community and A R C, and he built a facility called the Brooks House. And he's going to help them help put this all together. So what, they're, will make a request of probably around $700,000 for, for to be put into the capital budget, which would probably have to go to VNR because they own the facility. But they're going to be requesting them to, for capital funding to rehabilitate that juvenile detention facility, Meta Mountain, to, to have live-in facilities for women. And most of them will be women that have been charged and put incarcerated in Garrett County. When they come out, rather than going back to the street or whatever they go, they, they will be able to get some relief. Good facilities to help them rehabilitate and get back into society and cure their addiction problems.
Well noted. And I think we have a meeting with them coming up soon as well. I would just like to add my song to the chorus. Thank you, gentlemen, for your committed service to Garrett County. We talk all the time. I think we take it for granted sometimes how well we do get along with our legislative representatives. That's not always the case across the state, as you guys well know, and we certainly do from our contacts at Mako and our, our partners around the state. So we have said thank you many times. Well, one last time, thank you, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you around. All right. That actually concludes the public meeting agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the public on any topic? Hearing none, just a couple of real quick announcements. First of all, the next public meeting will actually be December the 7th. That is a slight change due to our schedules and, and everything that's going on. That meeting will actually be Commissioner Heimball's last meeting as Garrett County Commissioner before he does advance to Annapolis as a delegate. So that will be on December the 7th here at 4 o'clock. We do want to wish everybody out there a happy Thanksgiving. And we started this meeting on a very positive note, recognizing our young folks from Southern High School who, who did a great job, as, as we made a point to, to say. Two out of the last three years, kind of winning their Super Bowl events for the band. It is with heavy heart that we end on a, a very sad note. And some of you may know that not too many days ago, Garrett County lost a champion in Mary Sinsel McKeon. Mary has done a lot of things in Garrett County over the last many, many, many years. She did cover Garrett County government in the media for over a dozen years. She was very committed to the Arts and Entertainment District in Garrett County, both, she served as the director for both the Oakland Arts and Entertainment District and the Grantsville Arts and Entertainment District. She's been very committed to the arts in this county for a very long time, very close personal friend of mine, and I know Commissioner Heimball and Commissioner Tishnell as well. So what we would like to do is to get, to commemorate her in the, in the minutes of this meeting moving forward. But also, we would ask everyone just take a minute and a moment of silence to remember Mary and her contributions to the county. Thank you very much. If there is nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.